I'd like to call this Harriman City Council, December 3rd, 2019, meeting to order. Before we get started, we'll have a prayer by Councilman Wright, followed by the pledge leads to the flag. Councilman Wright?
Would you join me, please? Heavenly Father, as we begin this meeting tonight, may we remind ourselves that your Spirit is among us, and we are so thankful for the beauty that we see in your creation. Thank you for the opportunity to care for our small part of the world that you created. We ask and pray for your blessings upon the group of servants gathered here tonight, and that you would give us the vision and the wisdom to carry out our duties. Father, as we plan and share with you in your Holy Spirit, we must do so, say it as it is. In thy name we pray.
(inaudible) America, just every body where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please.
Darryl Cook?
Here.
Betty Holland? Tim Johnson?
Here.
Jimmy Lee? Sam Russell?
Here.
Lonnie Wright?
Here. I'd like to declare a quorum. Need a motion to approve the minutes of the November 19th, 2019 meeting?
I make a motion.
Motion by Councilman Johnson?
Second.
Second by Councilman Cook? Councilman Johnson?
No, sir.
Councilman Cook? The floor is open for discussion. Call the roll, please.
Darryl Cook?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Sam Russell?
Yes.
Lonnie Wright?
Motion carries. Motion to pay the salaries?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Russell?
Second.
Second by Councilman Cook? Councilman Russell?
No, sir.
Councilman Cook? The floor is open for discussion. Call the roll, please.
Darryl Cook?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Sam Russell?
Yes.
Lonnie Wright?
Motion carries. Need a motion to pay the bills?
I make a motion.
Motion by Councilman Johnson? Second by Councilman Wright? Councilman Johnson?
No, sir.
Councilman Wright? The floor is open for discussion. Call the roll, please.
Darryl Cook?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Sam Russell?
Yes.
Lonnie Wright?
Motion carries. At this time, we'll hear from delegation. If you'd like to address this council, please come to the podium, state your name, and limit your comments to three minutes. Okay, we'll go into reports. Harriman Utility Board.
Biggest thing I'm working on this week is in relation to Ridge Chapel Road, now they're spread outside the city, but tomorrow at about noon, they're gonna be blasting, and there's a potential that that could be an inch of watering to, I'm sorry, watering electric service, so, and with that in mind, we're gonna go ahead and take about a hundred customers out of service for a little while, and that way, if there is damage, it won't be quite as severe, we'll be able to get it restored faster, so you might hear, you might even see that about noon across the river. And this Thursday, we're excited to participate in the Harriman Christmas Parade. Our crews are getting ready for that, a lot of representation from all of our departments. And then, I wanted to invite you all to our Christmas breakfast. We do this every year, and I hope that you're able to attend. This year, it's gonna be Monday, December 23rd, and it starts around 7:00 a.m., and goes to about 9:00 a.m. somewhere. Also, on December 23rd, and our customer Lonnie, we're having Santa Day, we're gonna have pictures with Santa, little free gifts for first come, first served. That was really successful last year, and this year, we've got even better space for it. We had about a hundred kids and five dogs last year, so we'll see how that goes. Lastly, I want to acknowledge our employees. We've got a really good partnership with Harriman Housing, and we've been able to do an angel tree in collaboration with them, so HUB employees are providing lots of Christmas gifts, clothes, shoes, outerwear, and toys for the children there. And as far as projects, I should mention, starting in January, it's gonna be our Pass Iron Gas Project, and I've got a list of roads that that might affect, literally just little segments of each road, and this is something I've sent to Kevin in the past, but I will be putting a map on our website, so the customers can see more detail of where it starts and ends. And that'll start around January 6th, and the roads roughly are Crescent Avenue, Margate, Old Run Street, Oak Street, Maple Street, Chestnut, Washington, Carlock, and Carroll Drive. So we'll have more details on that coming soon. Questions?
Anybody have anything for Ms. Candace?
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate all of what your employees do to help with getting the lighting ready and everything that is happening downtown and throughout Harriman. We appreciate it, y'all.
Public Works, Mr. Lang.
I'm the mayor. From the last meeting, we finished cleaning up from Halloween, cornstalls, hay, everything like that. We put sixty foot of twelve inch plastic pipe into Pine Hills, across streets and the park. Put a U.K.S. basin over it, it was covered in solid Pine Hills park. Haven't got it in yet, I laid some block, it's too cold. Put sixty foot of fifteen inch pipe, plastic pipe, in West Teal, Donny Stevens' house. We're still loading and chipping lots of brush. Started lead pickup, put up Christmas banners, put up Christmas lights, picked up junk orders, decorated Christmas tree, and a few more other things y'all wanted out here, all that to have, too many to do, Mr. Wright. You know, I was up calling, you give, sort of get them off.
Anybody have anything for Mr. Lang?
Thanks for getting the message, Director.
Mr. Johnson, I appreciate you not calling me this morning. I got a dead tree laying in front of my ditch, I need y'all to get it. Have you sawed it up yet, sir? No, I pulled it down, laid it out there. I'll come over, I'll sire it, cut it up, and then we'll pick it up another. It ain't big, probably seven, eight foot. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lang. Appreciate what you guys done. It's cold out there yesterday, I seen them up in the truck, working, and we appreciate what you guys do for our city. Martin Wright?
One of the biggest things we had last month was our Veterans Day Parade at Riverfront Park on November 11th. John Gillespie worked hard putting it all together with the American Legion, him and Ron Cleveland, and we went to the school and asked him, could they bring some kids down? Next thing you know, Harriman High School had three, three hundred kids coming down there, and I know we had fifty veterans there, they really appreciate it, and I was an honor, it was an honor for me to be a veteran there when they come through there, so they lined the streets, and I think that was a good thing at the Riverfront Park. And speaking of Riverfront Park, we're working on the lights there, we started, Jake's been working on the archways, but I think we got ten archways, and Lowe's has been real gracious, they donated enough stuff to build five of them, and gives a good deal on the rest of the stuff, too, so Lowe's has really worked hard. Speaking of calling people, it's one thing about, I've kind of learned in here, is, you know, everybody works together really good. I mean, I've called the fire department, they send people over to help the arches, and Drac's always good to send somebody over, and the fire, the police department, everybody works really good together, and that makes, I'm probably a part of that team, everybody working together to, you know, get things done. But, and then you've got Billy Joe and Donna, David Webb and his wife, and all them working together to get the park done, and it just makes everything, makes my job a lot easier, and I sure appreciate the work that they do there. And on November the 25th, the rec committee met, I think Councilman Johnson went down with us, and Amy Neel went down, we went on the pontoon boat, took some pictures of the erosion on Riverfront Park, got some good pictures of there, went on down through the paper mill site, from the, got some good pictures of the waterfront on there. We have thirty some acres, really working together, committee to see what we want to do there, and we'll be working some more of that, probably have some more pictures out for there. I'm gonna start sending out some, after our committee meeting, to send out to everybody, so they'll know what's going on, to be everybody be better informed on there, too, so. Got some good pictures of the bulk rant they got down there, too, that I've been on here. Another thing, of course, we started back to fall practice last night, we had from thirteen to under, I think we got like twenty-three teams, you know, started our practice, hopefully start the games around January the 4th, to get that going. We had the, during the Thanksgiving week, they always redo the floor at the community center, we got that one done. Big thing at the community center is pickleball. We have, every day, we have probably anywhere from eight to twelve seniors coming down playing pickleball, so we had the floors actually, you know, had the striped out for that, so when they come down, I know those seniors really appreciate that, too, but it's going real well, getting that stuff done, too. Tasha's working really hard getting a lot of things done in March, we got a photographer coming down, he's got forty years of experience, gonna be getting classes, they'll be charged, but he seemed like a really nice guy, I think that's gonna work really good. She's got some other things, she's, she's working with the Rome County UT Extension, you know, for some cannon classes and stuff, a lot of people come last year, worked out real well, and working on, getting all that together, and probably the next, next weekend, we're working with the Three Rivers Theater on the play they got next weekend, starting Friday, Saturday, 13th, 14th, and 15th of December. The 13th, we got like eight elementary schools coming down, it's already sold out. We got a show on at 10:00 a.m., and a show on at 12:30. Now, we got all the schools in the county, and we got Cofield coming down, so I think it's hard, like I said, over seven hundred kids on Friday coming, and we'll look forward, hopefully get some more people working, get some more people on Saturday and Sunday.
Anybody have anything for Mr. Jones?
Thanks, sir. Appreciate what you all do. Park looks great, lighting looks great down there, we appreciate it. And you all are just not the park, we've had you all on every puzzle in Harriman, so we appreciate what you do.
And Mr. Mayor? I saved Mr. Jones' life there about last winter there.
Yeah, you saved it from inside the truck. I'm hitting it by a dog, he's there laughing at it. What am I talking about? My bird.
We had a play Saturday night, the radio version of it's wonderful, at the American Legion. Mary Kay Elsberg put it together, we, we done well, we had a lot of people show up, of course, you always want more, we had dessert, and the actors done really, really good. And the children's programs, they are going great, we have, we've been donating some money by a couple of different patriots at the library to go to the children's program, which is really great. One five hundred, one two hundred and fifty, which we appreciate a whole lot, one six hundred, too. The children's program will also have a flood in the Christmas parade this year. We have, their numbers are really growing, and we'll be having Christmas parties for all of them, and of course, we're getting ready for the Christmas tour. We are on it, and you can buy your tickets at the library. We haven't gotten them yet, but we will, of course, the day of the tour, people have the tickets, they will be selling them there. Just finished up the top grant, which is a grant that the state gave us to offer computer classes, and I'm in the process of applying again for it, so hopefully I'll receive it to use again next year. That's all we've got right now.
Anybody have anything for the library?
Thank you, ma'am.
Dr. Curley?
I'll bet you on a few items. I don't recall, but we did have budget approval by the comptroller, and I don't know whether the mayor got it later, approving with some recommendations, and that was good, they didn't have any, any questions about the city process and budget. I am working on a new depreciation schedule for our financial report. Our schedule is kind of old and bulky, a lot of things have sold or gone away, and so I'm working with the auditors, given the fact that we bought so many new vehicles over the last two, three years. We need to update, update that, so I'm working on helping them update that depreciation schedule. I guess also, too, I've noticed that we've had an unusually large number of tax notice changes this year, which means we have to go in, change the assessment in our system, and make whatever changes that are implied there. Sometimes refunding money to people, and sometimes getting more for what's been reappraised, so that's kind of unusual. That's about it.
Has that been a good thing for the city, or?
Well, most of them are reductions, as a matter of fact.
Thanks, sir. Anybody have anything for Dr. Curley? Thank you. City Attorney?
I'm working on several property maintenance cases right now, and the police department has been helpful in getting people served, at least the local property owners, others were still waiting on service, so once we get all of that sorted out, we can move forward on trying to enforce cleanup of these properties, and code enforcement always has more to give me, so I'm just working on that. And then, our case, outstanding case of Gerald Largin, that's set for trial February 20th of next year.
Anybody have anything for City Attorney?
Thank you, ma'am.
City Manager was unable to be here tonight due to some sickness in the family, so we'll get his report at the next meeting. Before we go into mayor and council comments, I'd like to ask the council to waive the general rule on twelve days to discuss and maybe take action on the old HUB property in downtown Harriman. Make a motion to waive the general.
Motion.
Second motion by Councilman Johnson, second by Councilman Cook. Councilman Johnson?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Cook? The floor is open for discussion. All right. The, as you all know, we've been looking at the old HUB building and property, HUB McGada, when they moved into their new building. Harriman Housing has been interested in the property, and moving their main headquarters into the property, and doing some redevelopment in that area, and doing so, keeping the fire department where it is, and extending its, its property that it's, not its property, but its area that they use. Right now, they're cramped in, this will give them a little bit more room, and they approved last night in their meeting to, to acquire the property of the city and utilities is willing to offset and give them the property. So what I'm asking council is to get a motion that we give them, we only own the property, we don't own the building, the building is owned by Harriman Utility Board, and that will be up to them, but I'd like, if we do it, I'd like to have a, in the motion, would be upon contingency upon Harriman Utility Board giving them the building, as far as just giving them the property. So, call for a motion for, to give them the property, or, yeah, so we can discuss it. Get with me? Do we not like the way we're moving forward? No. No, you didn't come.
Get into discussion between the members.
Call the roll. I think that's right, I said anybody opposed, then you're right. Go ahead.
Darryl Cook?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Sam Russell?
Yes.
Lonnie Wright?
Ask for any comment, I guess, did I? All right, so now, back to what I just said on all that, you know, I don't have to repeat it, need a motion to put it on the floor to discuss.
I make a motion.
Motion by Councilman Johnson, second.
I second.
Second, Councilman Russell, Councilman Johnson?
No, sir.
Councilman Russell?
I went and talked to Amy today, I think they've got some good ideas about it, so.
Now, the floor is open to discuss, and what we're, what I'll be, I had a motion to say. Y'all got me real confused now. What we're voting on is to give the property to Harriman Housing Authority, just the property upon contingency of Harriman Utility Board giving them the building. And that's what we're discussing.
Would the fire department be paying rent?
They'll be paying rent as what they are with Harriman Housing, it may not be the same rent, it will be based upon the criteria of what Harriman Housing sets up for.
And if they, they being the housing authority, if they ever decide not to use that property anymore, would it, would it come back to the city?
It will not, based on the way the motion is, it will not come back to the city, to State and Housing Authority.
On the rent side for the fire department, do we have any caps or anything, a schedule of what they're gonna pay?
I don't think that the...
So that we kind of, we don't get?
I don't think that, that Harriman Housing just went in and looked at what the square footage is and everything. Right now, we was getting into preliminary, and then they decided to take the property. Do you know, Amy, kind of what you're looking at?
What we planned to do, I think they wanted that whole left hallway where all the newer offices were, and so we were going to allow them to take that, and we were gonna use the downstairs right portion for our maintenance, as well as our dead files, any kind of mapping or anything like that that we have to have, as well as our leasing office. The upstairs, I don't know how many of you all have been in there recently, it still has the old stage and everything, and it's not a written in stone kind of thing, but what we would like to do is eventually make it into a event center for, for everybody to be able to use, keep that stage there with the high ceilings, so that if we wanted to put basketball goals or anything like that, that would also be able to be used. Maybe keep the high ceilings, make it look like the industrial look, with all the ceilings being black, with the ducting and stuff, the ductwork showing. Knock out all those upper offices, so it's one big, large area, and hopefully put like a kitchen in there, so that if we wanted to have events there, you know, they could cater it out of a kitchen area. As far as the fire department, to get back to that, we would work with them on a lease that they were, you know, able to swing with us, and a lot of that'll depend on, you know, we would give them a lower price, if they'll take care of, like, if they've got a stopped up toilet, or if they have a light bulb burnt out. I mean, you know, there's a lot of give and take right there, so it's basically, we're gonna have to get with the fire department and see what works best for us and them together as well, and come to an agreement and have a lease set. Because we do have to, because of it being such much larger building than what we're accustomed to, we have capital funding to be able to help us renovate the building and everything, but we want to keep it looking nice, we want it to be able to serve the community as well as, you know, our residents and things. So we don't want to be hard to work with or anything, we just want to be able to access more space and help them out as well.
Would this have any effect on in lieu tax that's paid to the city?
I think that the in lieu tax, the only way that that would, it's basically on our shelter rent, so the utility cost being a little bit more, I'm not sure how that would balance out, but hopefully with us charging rent to the fire department, that'll help offset some of our extra expense for utilities.
Amy, there's no plans for any residential?
No. No, I don't have any intention of having a residential area there, because our offices and stuff will be there with all files, with social security numbers and tenants information. I don't, I don't want anything like that to go on, because I don't want to risk any kind of, you know, information getting out that shouldn't.
Could I make a suggestion? I would suggest that there be an agreement setting out the expectations, and what all parties agree to in the event, say, like, the building's no longer used by them, what maybe should be placed on any fees for the fire department, and what the, what the expectations are. Could be a memorandum of understanding, or it could be a three-party agreement that's signed by the mayor, and HUB, and the housing authority. I know this is just, right now, the motion is basically, should we do it? But I would go a step further, and develop an agreement in which all these issues are addressed. That's just a recommendation.
Can I say that? I'm not really sure how that would work, because if we purchase the building from HUB for a dollar, and then we use capital funding, federal funds, to do the upkeep and renovations of the building, then we can't have somebody dictating to us what we can and can't do with the building, because it's basically gonna be government owned.
Well, you're basically giving away a building and property, and incurring a cost in terms of fee for the fire department to use it. That's all I have, but.
My understanding, the fire department's been paying a fee, though, to the utility board, right?
Yep.
So it'd be basically, so...
We pay the bill.
Yeah.
We, the city, pay the bill.
So it'd still be basically the same?
We pay the electric bill, and we pay for any additional fees they may charge, yeah, comes out of general behind.
All right. Any other discussion?
Do, something I've got, do we need to go ahead and put something for, that there be some kind of agreement that the fire department would still be allowed to stay? I mean, is there, do we need to put something?
And I guess what you're saying is, is if Harriman Housing came in, and a year from now said, "We don't want fire department here anymore, we want to utilize that property", our fire department's stuck without building.
Yeah, that's...
And I get that. So that would be, that would be a concern, but we don't have any more housing, unless we're putting all this out there.
But it's not big enough to keep the ladder.
So I guess that would be an agreement that we would, we would want to draw up that says that the housing, I mean, that the housing authority, that the Harriman Fire Department, as long as it's in existence, would be able to stay in that building.
Yeah, and them staying there is helping us as well, because we don't have any reason to use the rest of that building.
But I just think it down, years down the road, it may just protect the city and...
Yeah, when you're not there, and we're not here, somebody else come in and say, "We want them out here."
Exactly.
So can you draw up something?
I think there's been a little bit of discussion. I would have seen it as like a deed for the building and the land that it sits on. I think anything for fire department would be like a separate lease, and we can lease it for a longer term, as far as, you know, like twenty years or thirty years or something like that, to redo it in the future. But I don't know that we could section it off, because we just had the property surveyed this summer, to get the temperance building on its own lot, and the library on its own lot, and so we can't go and section it off now, because that's not how it was surveyed.
I don't want you to make me section it off.
No, we're not talking about making it its own property, we're just talking about including it in a lease.
Just draw up like a lease.
Well, it would be a separate lease, we couldn't necessarily put that on the deed, because the ownership for the whole survey law is going to...
A memorandum of understanding, that they get to use it as long as they're in existence, that wouldn't be, I wouldn't think would be on the deed, it'd just be between the city and the Harriman Housing Authority.
I just want to make sure there's, you know, at least two different documents that we're talking about, but I think today is more... But I think today is more, are we gonna let them have ownership of the lot? And we'll go forward from there.
And I agree with what Councilman Cook is saying. We need to probably have some kind of leasing in place that says what the price is and what, how long, you know, if it's a, if it's a hundred-year lease, knowing that in there it says that they will be going up at whatever, five percent, whatever. I don't know. This is, this is new territory to me. I think Kevin has been working on it. He's not here. We have a meeting in two weeks. I don't think you all are meeting until when.
We typically don't meet in December. We can cancel that meeting. But we could do a special call meeting just for this topic if you needed to explore it.
Would you all feel more comfortable to hold off on this until our next meeting, which is less, it's two weeks away to have all the answers as to what you want? To know about or you all could go ahead and approve and then them working out the lease?
I think we could approve it and just put in, I think if Councilman Russell may want to just be, or we can do an addendum that just says that in that, that there'll be some type of an agreement reached for the fire department.
Yep.
And he did agree to add the, well, you mentioned it's contingent on the HUB board.
Yes. Before we vote, can we get somebody to read exactly how that's going to be settled? We make sure we got it. How do you have? I just want to make sure we got everything if we vote on it then.
Basically, the motion is to go ahead and release the property to Harriman Housing Authority with a contingency that Harriman Utility Board does the same with the building. And then you added the addendum that, Councilman Wright, and who made the second on that motion?
I made the second.
Who made the motion?
Councilman Johnson.
Would you be okay with adding to it that we would, before I sign off, there'll be a lease drawn up that we'd agree to as far as the fire department? Does that sound good?
Greg?
Sounds good.
Sometimes we thought we didn't need Kevin here. So we have a motion of second. Any other discussion? Call the board, please.
Gerald Cook?
Yes.
Sam Johnson?
Yes.
Sam Russell?
Yes.
Ron Wright?
Yes.
Motion carries. It's all on the agenda. We'll go into council remarks. Councilman Cook?
I don't have anything.
Councilman Johnson?
No, sir.
Councilman Russell?
I'd just like to say, I think we should in the future, in the workshop, consider reducing our meetings down to one meeting a month instead of two. Just in the future, do consider that.
I don't, I think we tried that before and if we can't do it...
I understand we have to make a charter change, so.
And I have talked to Kevin about that this week. And it would have, it would take a charter change. And I'd have counsel with you wanting to make a charter change.
This is something I'd like to discuss in the workshop in the future.
Anything else, sir? Councilman Wright?
No, just you mentioned Kevin's mother and I understand she's been taken to the hospital. So we can keep her in the crires because she's really sick lately.
The only thing, I've got some announcements. The Christmas parade is this Thursday. Hope everyone shows up. Christmas home tour starts the fourteenth and fifteenth. The city Christmas party is the fourteenth. Everybody be getting those. And saying that, when Tammy come up and give her a port of the library, I apologize, I didn't come Saturday night. Forgot about it till I seen it on Facebook. Afterwards, pictures. And I say that in saying this, we've got to have a better system here with the city as far as our events. Some kind of notification because all I get is when we come here on the first and third Tuesday and I'm having to jot it down on this piece of paper and then go back and read it. And that's no way for us to know what's going on. So I will work tomorrow on getting us a system set up to work. We're notified of every event beforehand, so we don't, we don't have an excuse to miss anything. We know what's going on. I know Kevin said something about Google calls and all this stuff. I'm not tech savvy, so I don't understand all this, but maybe I will tomorrow.
But that's all I have. Anything else need to come for this council?
Officer Jern.
Mr. Jern, second?
Second.
All in favor of Wright?
No.
Any opposed, like so?